Good evening, everybody, and thanks for attending this evening's Milton School Committee meeting. We are meeting on Tuesday, July 16th. Our first fully remote meeting in quite some time. It's great to see you all. Thanks for making time to be here. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum, and we're expecting a couple more of our members to hopefully join shortly. So the first step for us this evening will just be to approve our agenda for tonight, July 16th, 2024. Does anybody know of any changes to the agenda? All right. So seeing none, we can go ahead and approve that agenda and transition straight into our first agenda item, which as usual is Citizen Speak, our public comment portion of the meeting. So during this part of the meeting, we set aside up to 15 minutes for members of the community to join us and share some comments, perspectives with us. We welcome residents to speak for up to three minutes at a time. We just ask people to introduce themselves, and if you're approaching your three-minute time limit, I will, I will let you know. If you would like to speak during this Citizen Speak, can you please raise your hand electronically? And we'll be able to go in the order that we see those hands raised.
I'm promoting Michael McCarthy.
Okay, great. Thanks, Glenn. Michael, are you there?
Hello, yes.
Hey, thanks. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say hello, Michael McCarthy. I am a resident from 22 Hollis Street. I am a town meeting member, a Milton townie, which seems to be an accolade that people throw in. So I'll throw that in there. And I am a father of three. So I, the reason I wanted to join today was really just to respectfully urge this committee to make public your stance on the school building project and whether or not it should move forward on this November's ballot. As you probably know, there has been an effort. There is a growing group of residents in Milton made up primarily of parents of young schoolchildren who have been trying to push this project forward. We've been intimately involved in this project, attending school building committee meetings, select board meetings, even school committee meetings. And we feel, based on what we've been watching, based on what we've heard from, you know, folks in town who were around in the last school renovation project 20 something years ago, is that November is going to give this project the best chance of moving forward. And so I'm asking this group, I know that you are leaders in this town, you're leaders clearly when it comes to education in Milton, to make your stance known to the public, whether or not you support this moving forward as a debt exclusion on the November ballot. We know that there's a daunting task ahead of you, right? There's likely a, an operational override coming next year. Now this debt exclusion, it's a lot to bite off for any town. But, you know, it, this project's been going on for more than half a decade. I really feel the time is now and would like this, this body to, you know, really help us and let Milton vote on this. Just let Milton vote on this. We, you know, it's, it's been held up for too long. And let's see if the residents are behind this or not. And I can give you, you know, my promise, and anyone I've really spoken to is fully behind helping with the operational override next year when that happens. But together, if these go in the fall, in the spring, it seems almost clear that they will fail. Anyone who's been involved with this process now for over five years, folks who are involved in the process 20 years ago at the last school build are telling us, they're urging the town, they're urging the select board that going in the spring will almost certainly doom the operational, or sorry, the debt exclusion, and push this back a year, maybe two, who knows how long. Interestingly, those who haven't been intimately involved in this process are now coming out with suggestions and saying that it should go in the spring. And even more curious are those who are publicly opposed to this project and have opposed it for several years, are saying that the spring is the best option for passing this. So I just thank all of you, and I ask you to please use your position as leaders in this town to help with this project, so our children don't have to wait anymore. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm promoting Peter Obersheimer.
Okay, thanks. Hi, Peter. Welcome, thanks.
Thank you. Am I up?
Go for it.
Thanks. It boots you out and then it lets you back in. Thank you, Chair Carroll, and good evening, School Committee. My name's Peter Obersheimer, 49 Row Street. Similarly, I come here on the topic of the new school building in my capacity as a resident. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 6, most importantly, as a parent. First off, I want to thank you all for your dedication and all that you do for this town through this committee or through your positions with the school. You're trusted leaders on the topic of school. For that reason, that I asked you to speak up publicly, support the initiative to place the debt exclusion override in the November ballot, so that the town can vote on whether to fund and build a new school. My concern grows as a parent as I think about the project's timeline. You know as well as anyone, the school building committee was established in 2019 to address the overcrowding issues. That was before my son was born. He's now headed to kindergarten. What's going to be one of the largest enrollment classes in decades with really no foreseeable end in sight to the project? And frankly, what I am concerned about is risk of derailment. I know there are competing views, as Michael mentioned, around how to best posture this issue in the operational override. A few facts I asked you to consider as you think about how to navigate those two with regard to your own position on the issue. One, because of the presidential election in November, it's my understanding voter turnout will be the highest at this time, which is a good thing for a school vote. Two, the project cost will only increase if we delay the vote, all while, as you know, the overcrowding issue perpetuates. In other words, November is our best shot within the next few years to get this passed. We always knew this solution would be complex, and as others have said, of course, there's emotion involved. What concerns me is when we move away from structure and process that we've set up to succeed in this situation. We've had structure and process with the appointment of the school building committee, with the moderator established with professionals to address the issue, conducted extraordinary diligence that they did to propose a solution that's before us. We've had structured process around volunteers through parents and other individuals like myself, helping to spread awareness and advocate for this issue, particularly around elections. I've listened and I've not heard similar process or substance behind the suggestion that our children are better off by putting the next phase on hold for some undefined period. I urge you to consider standing along beside us when we need you during this next crossroad. It appears the select board is pointing to silence from this committee recently, just on the November issue, to imply you're not in favor of a November vote to support its own inaction. If that is not your position, either individually or collectively, I urge you to make it known as the select board takes this issue up later this month. Thank you for your time and for what you all do.
Thank you. All right. I
There are no other hands.
Any other hands raised? If, if anyone else in attendance would like to participate in Citizen Speak, can you please raise your hand at this time? Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Do you, Glenn?
I do now.
Okay, so thanks a lot to both of our speakers. And as everyone knows, we don't respond directly to comments shared in Citizen Speak. However, obviously, the topic that both of our speakers joined to discuss with us are things that we'll be talking about shortly within the meeting when we discuss the school building project. So I will be able to, you know, perhaps respond to questions that they raised if that comes up in the course of our discussion. Before we transition to that, which is obviously the main agenda item for the meeting this evening, we are going to have a short superintendent's report and about a slightly different topic. And Peter, I'm not sure if you have any other updates that you need to share with us before we dive into the school building conversation. Thank you for joining from your important week with your colleagues, other superintendents across Massachusetts. Thanks for making time to be here. I'll hand it over to you.
Great, thank you, everyone. So yeah, I am, I'm down in Falmouth at the superintendent's conference, and the summer is going by quickly. Just a short update on the central office, all of our, our new members, you see Regina and Katie here. So we have welcomed them and FA as well onto the team. We met last week, had a great meeting. Meaning next week, we're really kind of starting to gear up for the retreats that are coming. We have increased the number of retreat days this year from, historically, we had anywhere from one to two, and now we have five days of preparation, which we really need as we start to plan and really kind of move forward collectively. We're finishing, we're still editing our implementation plan. We got a lot of feedback from all of our, our leaders, the 30 CLT group on J-26. Then we've taken all that feedback and are reworking that implementation plan. So we're excited about kind of where that's headed to. It's going quickly. And, but, but things are feeling good, and I think we're starting to see some of the work that happened over last year, and as we, we look to be really intentional and move forward this year, we, we see kind of, I can see the, the, the kind of the thread from the work we, we've done over the last year. So that, that feels good. It makes it, makes me feel like we're on track. The other thing, just the, on the report tonight is polling, and it's something that we're working on, trying to get done before the next election. You all, I think, remember, we, we discussed once, Tucker is a polling place is, is pretty challenging, especially when school is in session. There are issues of security. There are issues of access for students. It's a, it's a small footprint, and the voting takes up a large portion of the school. So if we can find, if, you know, collectively, as a town, if we can find a different location, that's better. So we are, I have, I have been working with Sue Galvin and with Nick. They are going, and I believe they went last week over to Conker Baptist to see if that would be a good location. I believe it may have been used in the past. And there's, I think, strong support for it from both the organization and, and collectively from the community too. So excited to hopefully report back soon with an outcome from that.
Thanks, Peter. That's great to hear that update. Thank you for working with Sue and her office around those conversations. I know, I think it may have actually been Parkway Methodist in the past that served as a polling location for those Tucker precincts. You know, definitely understand it's challenging to make a change of that magnitude, but personally really thankful that we're looking into it because we have seen the negative impacts on that one school community, in particular of when there are elections taking place during school, which will be the case on the Tuesday after Labor Day with the primary election, the next upcoming election. I, I just like to take this opportunity to also thank John Flakes, who's a town meeting member and Tucker parent, who's really helped lead advocacy around this particular concern and raising it to our attention. And just thanks to our colleagues in the town clerk's office who can help, hopefully help us investigate that, that new option. Mark, want to add something?
Yeah, no, I appreciate you shouting out John Flakes, just to mention that as well. And I know, again, from my, from personal experience being a school administrator where not polling site is just really challenging. So, you know, I appreciate that all the public schools, you know, all the schools, I believe, are pulling places where the high school is, and obviously Cunningham is, Tucker is, and so, you know, I think we do what we can to work with the town to provide those spaces. But up here, for all the reasons Peter mentioned, I think, and that John Flakes raised in his communication, I think it's great that we are working collaboratively to try and address this and provide them a little breathing room, given how difficult it can become to operate those things at once.
Anyone else have questions or comments around that topic of the polling places? Okay, so will you just keep us updated? Hopefully, as the can make progress around those plans, that would be, that would be great. Thank you very much. And is there anything else under your report tonight, Peter?
I'm, I think I'll wait on the, we, we've also been working on your end and was going to share a quick update on that, but I think I'll wait until the FY '26 agenda item.
That sounds great. Thanks. Okay, so in that case, we're able to move right into the chair's report, and we have one definitely important item to talk about this evening. Thanks. I see Sean O'Rourke as being elevated to join us as a panelist. Really want to thank you, Sean, for making the time to be here with us this, this evening to bring us some updates from the school building committee. I'd love to just give you that, the floor, let you kind of bring us up to speed because, you know, it has been at this point several weeks since we've had a formal update. Let you share that with us. And then Selena and Mark, you know, if, and Peter, of course, if you'd like to, like, chime in and share anything else from the various meetings that you all have been part of over these past weeks, that would be great. And then that will give us all a good base of information to have the discussion. So Sean, hi, thanks for being here. Is it okay if I hand it over to you?
Yeah, that's fine. So just for the record, Sean O'Rourke, town meeting member, precinct eight, and Chair of the School Building Committee. Chair Carroll, I have a presentation. I figure the graphics are probably easier to walk through, so if you don't mind, I'll share my screen.
That'd be great. Do you, yes, are you able to do that, or do we need to change anything?
Yeah, I believe so. We'll find out in a second.
Okay. Great.
Just let me know. Okay, yep. And then, you know, as they progress through, if people have questions, feel free to stop and go back. Whatever is needed, you don't need to wait till the end or anything like that. So essentially, the way that this presentation is broken down, what I wanted to do is kind of walk through the work we've been doing for both past seven months, you know, as far as creating teams and stuff like that, and let people know the work that's been done, that's kind of fed into the design. So what happens is there are essentially visioning sessions that were done. It was a weird term that started out. I'll talk a little bit about that. Show how all that kind of fed into the design of the overall building, which you'll see kind of floor plans and isometric stuff. And then essentially, the design is now feeding into the cost estimation. We'll talk about that. And then at the end, obviously, wrap it up with how it aligns with schedule. You know, just for everybody's understanding, you know, there's the makeup, the school building committee. The five of us at the top were appointed by the town moderator. At the bottom left, there are two representatives of your committee, Dr. Miranda and Mark Lauren. Mark's also vice chair of the committee. The select board, John Cohen, has joined us in, I believe he was appointed May 28th. So we appreciate his input. He's a hurs trader, so he does envelope rating of buildings and residential construction. So his inputs can be very valuable. This is one I bring up almost at every meeting. So this is, you know, our enrollment with horizontal line in yellow indicating the capacity of the elementary schools. And as you can see, we've been operating essentially a full grade level above the capacity of the buildings for about seven years now. The other thing that plays into this too is, you know, when we mentioned earlier, you know, the, I've talked about it multiple times, the incoming preschool right now is roughly on the numbers that was provided by Dr. Burrows, is about 369 students right now, and possibly maybe a couple more as we come into the fall, because it's always stragglers. The highest number we had was 372. So only three off from that highest number. The other thing to note too, at 372, you know, when we had that large class in there, that also corresponds to the largest peak that we had in here. I don't think we're going to get back up there, but my concern is with these size of classes, they increase every year. This year it went down because of COVID. But when you look at the year before, 356, as it went up to the next year in the first grade, more enrollment happened to 377. It's kind of a continuing trend. So when we see these large numbers of kindergarten, they're equating to these class sizes or strand sizes of about 400 kids that we're starting to see now in the middle school. So when I enunciate that, that concern is there, and mainly, when we had these bigger classes coming in before, we had space. The olden, there's not a lot of space, you know, left over in schools now. So, you know, more for people's recap, kind of where we're at, this is the existing grade configurations of the schools. You know, with the proposal for what we're doing is regrading the elementary schools from just kindergarten to fourth grade, bringing up space in, in those elementary schools without having to redistrict. Similar for the Pierce, we're taking three grade levels and they are reducing it to two, and then creating this new upper middle school with the pre-K that we'll talk about. So, you know, kind of quick timeline since last fall, we worked through the fall and the winter, basically developing the team that's been working on this with PMA consultants as our own as project manager, and Arrow Street Consulting as our design, with a number of consultants underneath them. As we wrapped up the contracts with them, executed everything by, you know, kind of mid to late February, we led directly into this visioning. I'll talk about that a little bit later. As we went through the visioning process, it was there, there's some overlap with visioning and design. And, you know, we've been working on this design now for about four months, really fine tuning everything, getting input and stuff like that. And, you know, as you can see on the timeline, here we are tonight. So another recap here for people, you know, the proposed locations at Cow Road. Two years ago, we went through and passed the land swap to secure a parcel of land there. That land swap right now is in its third reading at the State House and is, you know, from what we're seeing is on track to get passed by the end of the month. So, you know, all good news that we've got, it's gone through the Senate, a number of committees there, and now it's in the House, it's kind of on its third reading. After the third reading, it would go back to the Senate for a roll call vote, back to the House for a roll call vote, and then to the governor for signature. So that's kind of the process that's going on with that. With the land swap and the parcel that we had, you know, we worked with the architect to basically develop what the building layout is going to look like. So using that, that parcel of land, how are we going to site a building, the parking and everything on there? One of the components that came up when we reviewed this, we looked at multiple options, but it basically grouped itself into two, and I presented that earlier when we selected the architect. They had what they called a consolidated strategy, which was a singular building that housed the middle school and preschool together, or campus strategy where they had two separate buildings. So over that course of the design, we've looked at a number of options. We liked what we saw here as two, two buildings, and the reason for it, we just felt it gave a little more latitude for the design of the preschool, allowed us to do something differently. And then potentially sometime in the future, a full day preschool became an option that we wanted to explore. We'd have the opportunity to do it, whereas if it was integrated into the lower level of the building to expand it later on was almost impossible. So some additional work that people, you know, we've kind of been doing is, you know, for this building, we've been doing subsurface gourings to get conditions that are going on under the ground. Long Gile Road, we poked four holes in the ground, took coring samples. We coordinated that with the Conservation Commission, attended a couple of meetings with them to get the approval. And then in addition to those boring analysis that we did there, we also did a soil analysis for any hazardous materials, which we found none. So everything in regards to the boring has that was in good, good shape. The other one that came up is originally way back when we were doing the land swap. Along Gile Road was a patch of wetland that, you know, the Conservation Commission agent Steve Ives, you know, considered wetlands. We work with BSE Engineering, we did soil sampling with them, you see the pictures out there, and basically went through the, the analysis that was there. It's kind of interesting for me to get to determine they are not wetlands. Even though it's wet soil, it doesn't meet the definition of what a wetland is. So we're working on a final determination of that with CONCON, that's forthcoming. So the visioning sessions, you know, for me, it was, I was trying to think of the best way to describe these, but essentially what we see here is, is what it was, you know. We got the district leadership team together, put everybody in the room. We had a lot of ideas or pictures of what schools could be. What is your vision for what you see in this new facility? So it started with, you know, the, the design team touring the schools, and then we went on a bunch of existing new schools as tours to get an idea on them. The designers also had an initial listening session where they brought the district leadership team together, listened to everybody, what they were saying, and then basically started working these visioning workshops after that. After the vision workshops, we started going into programmatic workshops where we're taking the parts and pieces, putting them together. And then basically, we, we wrapped it up with a kind of overall review, and this is what fed into the design. As you can see from the district leadership team, we had everybody there, you know, superintendent was there, principals, early childhood education director, a number of teachers over 20, special ed, middle school librarian, IT department, curriculum leaders. So it was, it was a deep roster of individuals from the district that we had. The other one, as a side-by-side component, as I alluded to, we went on site visits of newly constructed schools, two middle schools, two preschools. And what you see here is actually the library at the Douglas Gates Preschool. It's very nice. So the first set of ones that we did was Chatham Middle School, which was in Wayma. Large middle school, it actually won a couple of awards for how nice it came out, very big, very modern, very nice space. Similarly, we went to Lester Gates Middle School in Situate, a little bit older in, in construction, but basically the same, very wide open, very modern, very nice. The Newton Early Childhood Education Center was the unique one. This is a renovation of an existing elementary school. So they had a building that was empty that they could use, and they renovated the entire thing into to an early childhood education center housing preschool. The amazing thing with this is the amount of space that they had in there, like when you compare and contrast where Milton is right now as opposed to what they have right now too. And then finally, you know, as I mentioned, Douglas Gates Preschool, this was similar to the type of building that we're going to be constructing. However, this one was an elementary school with a preschool wing on it, where for us, we're doing a middle school with a separate preschool, but on the campus. So the one I, I'd asked, you know, everybody to go through is, I'll forward this link on to everybody. This is This is the before video, the walkthrough, the tour of the school that they wanted to get rid of to replace. What you see on the bottom is an image of that tour and at the top is what they ended up with. The image at the bottom is eerily similar to everything we're experiencing in Milton right now. For those of you who are familiar with the interiors of the buildings, that's what it looks like. And to see them go from that to what they have today was astounding. So all this stuff, the visioning, the visioning tour, the, uh, the site visits, all this stuff fit into what you're going to see now as far as the design. So there were multiple iterations to this design. So as, as you're aware. When we first identified the site, we had DRA do an initial study for, hey, can you put a building here housing this many kids? There wasn't a lot of input. Um, from the district, mainly because we didn't have the, the funding to like have them uh do as detailed analysis of Barrow Street as done. And when they did that, you know, they had a building of about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Uh, if you take NSBA and plug the numbers in that we have for a middle school right now, they're at about a hundred and eleven thousand square feet. Uh, but it doesn't include some of the uh things that we have in Milton, namely the world languages and some other exploratories. And also it doesn't reflect the fourteen configuration. So we got into the visioning. The visioning is, again, like I said. Throw everything at the wall, see what you like, see what sticks. All right. So we did all that and we came onto a very large building, about two hundred thousand square feet. Hundred and sixty eight thousand for the middle school, thirty three thousand for the pre K. Um, and, and again, this is aspirational. So, you know, we took that as our starting point, knowing we had to refine it. For example, the preschool component here was considering full day preschool. That's why it was at thirty four thousand square feet or thirty two thousand. Um, so what we did is we worked with the district leadership team and did a revision to that and started looking at. Uh, right sizing some of the spaces. So for classroom sizes, we looked at what the existing middle school has now, made it a little bit bigger. And that basically took the, the visioning size down to an acceptable size there. There are other refinements that we did there too, but, you know, uh, you know, we, we kind of went through it all. And then finally, we did one last revision where we worked with, again, with the district leadership team. Uh, to reduce down to seventeen from eighteen. So we'd have either eighth grade have four or three grade strands. And vice versa on the other end. Uh, we also reduced the world languages down. Uh, and, and what we're doing here is right sizing this, just further refinements for what we were doing. Now, when we looked at that, we wanted to compare it to make sure, you know, we're, we're not, you know, I don't want to use the term stripping it down, but reducing it, that it's not workable. Uh, because obviously our key thing here is making a building that works in the future educationally and most functional. Um, so what we did is we looked at other MSBA projects that are out there and their square foot assignment per student based on enrollment. And as you can see, we're right in line with those. So they gave us back a comfort level that we didn't strip too much down before. We thought we were a little bit high or over. So looking at the middle school now and focusing on that. Um, what you see on the left is a stacked version. It's almost like an exploded view of the building. Of all the classrooms and all the spaces, essentially they're all color coded. So we've got a four level building, you know, walk us through it. What you see here is the first floor, it's roughly fifty eight thousand square feet. Um, it consists of the gymnasium, the auditorium, admin, exploratory, STEM tech and cafeteria. Um, you know, it lays out quite nicely on the site. We tried to move it as far away from our neighbors north as we possibly could. Um, the second, the, the second floor that's here is basically where we started introducing classrooms in the media center or library. Along with special education, I believe special education is kind of spread out throughout the building, not zoned anywhere. Uh, and then the third and fourth floor are pretty similar at, you know, roughly twenty two thousand square feet. Uh, again, laying out the teams as it goes up through there. The key thing that I became learning about is when we're hearing of these teams, uh, what it is, it consists of three regular classrooms and a science classroom. It's larger with the, with the prep space on there. Uh, part of the layouts that we've done here too is the classrooms have small group rooms and then shared learning commons that are, are broken out on here too. I didn't want to get into that much detail tonight. Um, but essentially what you're going to have is side by side classrooms, a small group room that they can work in, and outside of that, a learnings commons for, for each team too. So the program space, as we look at it from the middle school, like I said, is about a hundred and twenty seven thousand square feet. Uh, there are seven teams. Uh, the main, one of, one of the main things that came up too. From the DRA uh concept that we looked at, which was a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, it didn't have an auditorium. And, you know, that, that right away, that became a key thing for us, knowing that the existing middle school would have an auditorium. And then kids would come to this, this building and not have an auditorium. We felt it was important to create an auditorium, have that space in there for them. Um, so we'll jump into the preschool. And preschool is a little bit easier. Uh, we've got a two level structure here. Um, special ed on the first floor with admin in two classrooms. Uh, the green hatch you see right here is basically what's considered a big, big room or a playroom. And then on the upper floors, we have uh some special ed along with more classrooms. Uh, again, it's about twenty five thousand square feet, uh, and houses exactly what we have for the preschools right now. So what happened is, you know, all, all this design fed into uh what we, the school building committee went through last night. Uh, as far as the feasibility study, and that consisted essentially of a project narrative, you know, describing everything that we're doing there. Uh, some of the floor plans, some of the stuff that you see uh that we just presented. Um, the bories presented a geotechnical report so we can make sure we're designing adequate foundations. Uh, we have narratives for all the architectural MEP structural. Uh, we have a geotechnical report, again summarizing all the findings that we had, and then initial draft. Uh, traffic report. So all this is feeding into our cost estimator right now, who's working on this currently as we speak. Um, you know, there's, there's been comments about total project costs. I know that people have concerns with that and, you know, our, our, our goal has always been to be transparent. Uh, you know, the total project cost on this is going to be whatever that construction cost comes up with, with approximately a thirty percent adder on there. For a soft cost, so we can pay the architects, engineers and uh OPM along with FFME and other, you know, essentially design contingency. So, you know, expanding on that, on a timeline or schedule that we're looking at, you know, we're coming up at the end of July. Uh, there's a, a meeting that I, I understand will be presenting a select board uh next Tuesday night. Uh, our goal with that is to have uh this lineup for a presidential election in November. And to do that, the select board would need to have um the ballot question authored, uh, sent to the secretary of state that I believe they'll have to get. Uh, certified by the town clerk first. And then once that's there, we would then work towards it's special town, uh, town meeting, followed by the debt exclusion that's there. And then essentially with that, I'll open up, see if there's any questions and, um. Uh, if we could too, I believe, uh, the architect and the OPM are probably in the audience too, if we could promote them to, just in case questions come up. It would be Sean Burke and Shonali, I can't pronounce Shonali's last name, she's going to kill me.
Thanks so much, Sean. Um, I do see Sean Burke there, um, if we can promote him. Um, before we open up to questions and conversation. Um, Mark or Selena, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things I would say, I would thank Sean O'Rourke again. Uh, for just the ongoing, uh, you know, work on this. It's been quite the road. Um, in the team, we've been fortunate to have, uh, put together quite a robust team that's been able to go through all the steps of visioning, et cetera. To get us to the feasibility study, which they'll feed to the cost estimates. And I think that's something that. It's important to sort of understand and know that they, all these different steps needed to happen prior to a cost estimate. We couldn't come up with that out of thin air. We needed to know sort of what the design was going to be. Um, so there's been a lot of work, um, and a lot of thought given to that. And, uh, you know, thinking obviously administration and teachers and principals and everyone involved in, in the process. I think we're at a crucial moment right now where we do need to sort of look at uh this tight schedule that we're in. Um, and, uh, you know, thank you, Sean, for going to the select board and speaking on our behalf of the committee to bring. Uh, where we are in the process and knowing that, you know, we do sort of need their support to be able to keep moving forward so that we can. Um, maximize all the work and leverage the work that we've done so that we can contain cost as much as possible. The more longer we delay this, the more expensive this project becomes. And our kids can't continue to wait. So we have to continue with the pace that we're doing and. Um, I just hope that folks, uh, you know, not only the select board, but also. Our, our residents in town understand that this has been an involved process to get to a cost estimate. Um, but thank you again for the leadership and I'll turn it to Mark in case he has anything else to say.
Very little, because you said many of the things I wanted to say. I'll say for myself again, also thank you to Sean, also thank you just all the other committee members, because there, there's a lot of talent in that group, I really appreciate it. And the newest member, John Cohen, you know, still, still getting up to speed, uh, fully on everything, but already contributing and I appreciate him for that. Um, I think the other thing I just say is just as a reminder of folks, kind of where we've come here. Uh, is, you know, when we were kind of, not this past, uh, May, Tommy, but the one before, when we did the land swap, right? We were looking at a five to seven year kind of construction timeline. And so the team has really put a lot of urgency into this work of getting the funding. Last fall town meeting in December, bringing on these great, um, professionals like Sean Burke and Arrow Street and others. Um, and, you know, we have, we are now kind of within a, a short sixteen month window here. At a point where we have a project fleshed out enough and we know in the next, you know, week or two that we will have a number with that project. We expect to have the land in hand, uh, in the next, in the very short term. All of those things that were kind of unknown and up in the air. Um, very short while ago, we, we have been able to nail down and we're now in a place where. We can move forward with a, of this fall, um, in order to push along, uh, this very urgent process. So I'm really excited about that. Really appreciate all the, all the time that goes in, you know, the committee's been meeting weekly essentially for a lot of. Um, for a few months there and, um, just appreciate all the volunteers.
Thanks, Mark. So, um, let's just. Open this up to questions. This is our chance to, um, sort of. Really make sure we understand where we are. I, um. I'm happy to, um, sort of share. Some updates, um, from conversations I've been part of in my own opinion around this project, but I, I'd like to first just make sure. Everyone has a chance to ask questions. Anna, go ahead.
Okay. Um, thank you all for this presentation. I've been kind of out of the loop, so it was nice to see all of it kind of come together. It looks great. Um, I did have a few questions. Uh, first of all, Sean, you mentioned that there might be. Possibility of expanding the pre K program into a full day. Is that something that you would kind of add on to the building above? Because I noticed there wasn't much space in the area that we're working with.
Yeah, let me just pull it back up and show you the process. So the, the building that you see here in yellow, uh, the intent is, it, it's hard to see right here, but I can, I can send it along separately. But boxing out this area here as future expansion. Um, so the, the intent would be make it like an L shaped building to expand it out. Uh, but, you know, the, the part of it is that, that's not what we're pricing right now. That's not what we're. Um, no, we're building, that's the better way of putting it. But what I, you know, similar to, you know, when I first came on to this project, you know, over five years ago. My, my whole thing was, you know, can we expand the existing buildings? You know, can we do, you know, is there shadow space that we can do it? And it wasn't there. So, you know, for me as part of this project, knowing that after we do this, there's going to be nowhere land in town. I know I keep saying that, but. It, it's, I'm just trying to make this work that in the future. You know, if the federal government subsidizes a universal pre K and we decide to do it as a town, we can expand this building to accommodate it. That's, that's one of the goals I've been working towards on it.
Okay, that's great. Um, no, that's really good to know. So. Uh, the other thing I wanted to know, I know you guys did a feasibility study. Is that something that's going to be available for?
Yes.
You and see, especially like, I know there's always concerns about traffic and. Construction and all that good stuff. So I think that might be something worth putting out there if it's, you know, if it is. Um, if you've already collected that data. Um, so, um, might be worth putting that out sooner than later. Um, the other question I had, I know. We talked about, so if this goes through for the November ballot gets passed, are we still looking at the? Um, the start date of September twenty twenty seven? Is that still our goal? Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that a little bit. So, you know, we met with the cost estimator earlier, uh, to kind of review the feasibility study. One of the things he asked about is, you know, in his estimate, what the construction durations would look like of start time and stuff like that to. The layout, what, what would be escalation? Um, so, you know, based on what we're looking, ideally, we, we'd like to start as soon as possible. So essentially. The initial first package would be a site package, real line Gile Road, clear the site to be ready for a building. So we don't have to design the entire building to wait for that. And it's kind of like a staged deployment of construction. In order to do this as efficiently as quickly as possible. But yeah, September twenty twenty seven. Assuming that we're still voted this, uh, November successfully, yes, that's our plan.
Okay. And then lastly, I know Amanda has questions, so I will keep this brief. Uh, my other question is, I know we're trying to get costs kind of done in the next two weeks. And sometimes when we're trying to rush through stuff, you know, we might not have exact numbers. How are we kind of. You know, planning for any overages that happen once we get into construction?
Yep. So first is reassure everybody we're not rushing this. You know what I mean? We, 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 like this, this project has been, you know, thoroughly thought out for a long time. And, and I mean, we, we brought the professionals on. I'll let Sean touch upon, you know, we carry a design contingency. As part of the estimate that's there, uh, and, and that's basically used, uh, to, to cover. So essentially you have a large contingency at the beginning of the project. As you start refining it, you pull into that contingency to make sure you don't go through any overages. And Sean, you can feel free to chime in if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, that's correct. We will have, um, not only will have design and construction contingencies, we'll also have escalation contingencies to deal with, uh, the rising cost of construction as the. The project timeline goes on. So that's all built into our estimate and our total project budget. Uh, so there are buffers in there, uh, to ensure that we stay within that, the budget and. Uh, we just continue to hold to a number. Once we, once we set a number, we set a budget for the project, the, the goal would be to stay, uh, under that budget and not go back for more money.
Okay. And it will also include the thirty percent for soft costs as well, right?
Correct. They, they would be the entire project budget is what we would be approving.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. And one of, one of the nice things with that is having that project budget, you know, basically gives us guardrails for the design. You know, as I mentioned, the visioning session, there were no financial, you know, constraints on there, like throw everything there and see what comes out. That's where we had to kind of pull it back a little bit, knowing that we couldn't build the two hundred thousand square foot building. Uh, and one of the nice things with this is once we have a published budget that's out there, we held to that, you know, uh, so we'll be doing that. Your, your comment on the feasibility study, what we're waiting for is they have the cost estimate there with it. And then once, once the cost, final cost estimate is done, we're going to package it all up and have it out there published so people can absorb it.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Amanda, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I, I echo, um, what Anna said. I think it's great how. Many stakeholders you guys had involved to really inform the project. I think, I, I think that. You know, obviously it was needed, but it's not always done. So I appreciate that. Um, I have just a few questions. One is actually a follow up along a similar line about of Anna. So I know that the talk, there's talk about the way you were looking at the pre K. Would be if it was extended day. I just am curious if there was any feedback. I don't know, like, do we have a waiting list for people to get into the preschool? Right now, currently, because I know that it's, you know, there are pure students and then.
the typical kids and then other kids are going to other programs. So do we find that it's a program that more people would want to subscribe to if they're enrolling? If there's the space right now, do you know? I guess I'm just wondering if we're building it to the size that we have. Are we missing an opportunity right now to address need that's there? But if it's not, then it's not.
Yeah. So, yeah, I was going to pass it to Peter or Glenn.
I was just going to jump in here. Yeah, so we have both full, full day and half day. And we have programs that students are on and IP are within those programs. So for the, the half day programming, we, we are at about the right place right now in terms of our size. There was some concern when we were talking this past year about going over to Curry that we wouldn't be able to, to fill the half day slots. So the half day is not as much of a, is not as desirous as a full day. We do have a full day program at Tucker. That fills up quickly and there's a lottery to get into that. So if we built, if we decided to scale pre-K, we could, we could certainly fill full, full day programming. The question would be, how are we funding it?
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Thank you. Could you give it, what's, how big is Pierce? I'm just trying to get a sense comparatively, square, square footage.
Yeah. So the existing Pierce, that was one of the measuring sticks that we used as we're looking at 200,000 square feet during visioning. The existing Pierce is roughly a little over 150,000 square feet.
Okay. And then the final thing is, I know that in the past you had talked about doing, doing something that was almost, almost like a tax implication or a, you know, cost implication residence. And I know that this differs if it's an override versus a debt exclusion. So are you guys looking at something along those lines to have as part of the presentation or to share with, with people so that they know the impact?
Yep. Yep. So, so part of the feeder, so the visioning feeds into the design. The design feeds into the cost estimate, the cost estimate, when we get that number, is going to feed into that next phase. So along that timeline, you know, our hope is we would be lined up for the November ballot and basically use the time between now and November to educate people on everything that's going on. The first part of that would be costs and the tax implications on the, the residential tax impact for people. I know a member must though, the Select Board was asking that it be broken down by 100,000 dollar blocks, not at median home price and let somebody figure out that way. So that's our, that's our plan. There is legislation that's in the state right now outside of the land swap that's there that is also going to play into that tax impact. It allows you for bonding to spread it over typically right now it's a 30 year duration. This would allow municipalities to spread it over to a 40 year duration and basically lower that impact too. It, it, it wouldn't stop us if it's not there. For example, if it passed next year, we could reissue that debt. If it was tied right now to a 30, we could reissue it almost like rewriting your mortgage to a 40 year one. The, the other thing that plays into too is the tax impact, you know, when you talk about it, the difference between the debt exclusion for a capital improvement project and a operational override, it's two totally different things. And it's important for people to pay attention to them. An operational override, when we talk about that in the spring is immediate. So once it's passed, your taxes go up. A debt exclusion one boat that would happen there, the tax impact of that is spread out as we issue the debt as the construction goes on. So it's something that, once it is, if we pass it in November, our taxes are not going to go up in December. Not until we start issuing the debt later on during construction, start building school, that you'd start seeing the tax impacts of those. So essentially they would ramp up over time. But when we do those tax impacts for it, it would just give that flat number or the ceiling number that, you know, your highest level that you would see at some later point down the road. Hope that, I hope that helps.
Yep. Thanks.
Just to quickly jump out on the, the question Amanda asked. I know from the tax calculator standpoint, that was something that the assistant town administrator Nick Connors was working on. I don't know, Sean, if you've heard anything more from, from him or, or not. But again, as I brought this and updated to previous school committee meeting, I know the town finance team and the town team is, is aware of that desire for folks at the tax calculator. And that is something that, that they are working on. So that's, you know, not, not something that the school building committee itself would create, but, but the town office would. And again, Sean, if you have an update on that, great. Otherwise I can reach back out and try and get that for that committee.
Yeah, no real update as far as what the tax impact would be. But I know they're waiting our number to kind of feed that in and for the operational override. So I, I, I think the hope would be if you were voting on this in November, you would understand what the tax impact would be for the debt exclusion, along with what potentially is coming in the spring for that. So that when voters are asked to make that decision, that would have both, 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 both impacts there for them to review.
Bow, since you haven't gotten to ask questions yet, why don't, we'll let you go ahead and then back to Anna.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how many students can we fit into that upper middle school? Like with the student projection that we have right now and we, because we already have the students in our school systems. And imaginably, everyone's going to go up within our Milton public school system. Then do, how many students going to be able to fit within this building? And is, is the cafeteria and auditorium that you mentioned in the plan going to fit all the students and the staff and teachers? Because that's usually a problem with buildings is that we projected into a lower number. And then once those buildings finish building and everybody trying to come into the town and there will be increasing numbers of enrollment. And the auditorium and cafeteria usually have a problem with hosting all the students at once. So I'm just curious to know if this is already taken into consideration.
Yeah. So the short answer it is, so again, going back like five years, you know, when I started on this, part of the question was, you know, similar what you're saying, you're building these new schools. Did you build them enough to have expansion to absorb, you know, people wanting to come? One of the nice things for us as the town, doing this project outside of MSBA's guidelines, it gives us the opportunity to build that in right now. So if we were to go with MSBA, they would tell us what that enrollment number is and then we'd have to design to that. And if we wanted to expand on that, we wouldn't be reimbursed for it and essentially would dilute the reimbursement. So the answer to your question is, you know, we did, the, the enrollment number is 670 that we're planning on for, for the upper middle school. We believe, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you were deep in the numbers on that, but it was like 30 or 40 kids over what we have now, or was it more than that?
That's all right.
Yep. So what happened is, you know, we, we did that to allow it to expand to that point. And then what we also did is looked at utilization of the classrooms. That's part of the fine tuning that we did there for average class sizes that we're going to have. And even at that 670 number, our average class sizes were smaller. So essentially, if we looked at it, if the class sizes were to increase, I forget exactly what the class, again, Sean was deeper in those, those discussions than me. You know, we could accommodate it. So. And we did, and also we did similar on the pre-K. So the pre-K, we currently have eight classrooms. We put nine in there right now. So the ninth is kind of a flex room that they have that potentially they could utilize or extend. But the key for us was making sure that we had that ability to expand if we needed. I know it looks like Bow is redoing her audio, so if you need me to repeat that, Bow, just let me know. All right.
Bow, are you all set or did you have other questions or comments?
I, I have one more question is that how is, how, how is this two new building going to affect the staffing? Like we, we definitely going to have, need to hire more custodians, lunch aid and perhaps teachers as well. So how is that going to affect a, a budget for staffing in the future years?
Yeah. And for that one, I kind of asked Dr. Murrow and the Wayne a little bit. That, that did come up during our visioning sessions too.
Yeah. So we, we believe, you know, we don't have a total number. So I don't want to quote a total, total cost impact because there are decisions that we're going to need to make with peer staff and looking at other programming across the district to determine. For example, a teacher right now, a 1.0 teacher at Pierce, teaching three grades, does that become, do you, do you split that up exactly, that 1.0 into a point six six? And then add point three, do you keep some at 1.0 for two grades versus three grades? So, so there's, there's work that we, we didn't, we don't want to do outside of working with staff on some of those decisions. So we have talked about, and we know that we need a principal, we need an assistant principal, we're going to need custodians. We're going to need an admin assist or two. So, so we, we expect there to be a staffing increase. I know from talking with other superintendents on building projects locally that going through a similar process and, and everybody said, you know, there's going to be no staffing impacts. And then when they got to that point, they had all sorts of work that they had to do to essentially move staff around from other buildings to be able to, to open that school. So I think we do, we do want to recognize that we will need more staff. But we will also look to for efficiencies as we make the, the shift and look to, to share staff across buildings too. So there's, there's definitely some staff would be shared across Pierce and the upper middle school. And then some staff would potentially, there, there may be one or two that, you know, would, would work better at, at one building as opposed to trying to get a point two. And then, you know, you've got all the kind of the pieces of staff which can be challenging to fill. So hopefully that's, that's helpful. When we get to the point where we need to, to share a final number, we will, we will kind of go ahead and, and kind of give a hard and fast number. But we do want to, like I said, engage staff in that conversation too, so it doesn't come out of the blue.
I really appreciate all the answers. Thank you so much for the, all the hard work that you guys put in, in the school building commu- committee.
Go ahead, Anna.
Um, I actually, I did have a question because what you mentioned, Peter, really does, will probably impact our operational override, you know, as we think about what that number ends up being, especially if it's something that we're planning a few years out. And then the other question I had was for Sean, I know you mentioned the difference between the debt exclusion override and a standard operational override. I know you mentioned it, you know, it's not going to hit right away, but it will over the next 30 or 40 years, how many ever years we expand the debt over. But I think having that, like, what would that number be in year one? And then at the highest point, and then year 30 is really helpful because we also have to factor in multiple operational overrides during that 30 to 40 year timeframe. So just so that people kind of have an idea of what that's going to be, just to, you know, just as we are being transparent, I think that's going to be really helpful for people to understand. You know, I think, you know, you guys have done a phenomenal job. It's really great to see how thorough you have been in this process. I know it's not easy and it's been a lot of work. So thank you all for, for all the work you've put into this. This is really, really good.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, as a taxpayer too, I'm very interested to see what this is going to cost. But I mean, for me, I'm excited because, you know, the project, as you can see, between what we had last year, when we looked at this stuff to where we are right now, is, it, it's a tremendous jump. There's been a lot of work done, like I said, the past six months. And I'm excited that like we're, we're actually starting to see it a little bit more. It's gone from just basically a 2D plane of the hand sketch that we had on there to much more. We're going to get into mastering, rendering exteriors and stuff like that. But understanding what that overall cost is, you know, we, we're going to get it pretty soon. And then, you know, once we get it, it will be public for everybody to discuss. And then once we have that, the tax impacts, we'll work with the town, PMA, and, you know, have, have those for everybody. You know, there's no intent of trying to hide any of that.
Thank you.
So on that note, I guess one question that I have is just, I mean, thank you for the really great informative presentation, all the work that is behind that, as everyone else has said. And I'd, I'm, I'd like to sort of, if it's okay to talk through a little bit where we're heading these next couple of weeks in terms of the coordination of this sort of final push. This presentation tonight was so informative. Really appreciate the detail. It's obviously been so great to have the thoughtful and really comprehensive input of MPS, leadership and staff. So we, as a school committee, I mean, what has typically been our cadence, you know, pertaining to recommendations from the school building committee is that we take them up for a vote here at the school committee, which is not a binding recommendation necessarily, but which is important. As a couple of our residents who spoke at Citizen Speak also mentioned, you know, symbolically, but also just in the meaningful way that we on school committee are very close to the actual impacts of this problem we're trying to solve through this project. And it's important for us to be able to speak to that. Practically speaking, so you're going back to Select Board next week. Is my understanding to provide the updates that you've been able to share with us tonight, the cost, it, it sounds from the presentation and the discussion so far like the, you know, we know we are still waiting for that cost. And obviously that is the final important piece of information for our elected bodies to be able to take their formal vote on this. That includes us at the school committee being able to make a formal recommendation slash request to our colleagues on the school building, sorry, on the Select Board, before they need to take a final vote prior to August 6, 7. So Sean, what, is there a way for you to lay that out? I'm reading between the lines and I'm expecting that it will be important for us to reconvene. Well, first of all, to really ask our colleagues on Select Board to kind of hang in here with this process and the understanding that it, it is taking time and it is not being rushed, but it is a process of identifying that cost to make sure we have all the information available to make an informed decision. So that's, you know, that's what's happening. If that's not something that will be ready for the next Tuesday, the 23rd meeting, if that won't be part of that presentation, or, you know, what are you hoping for, I guess? So that we can also plan accordingly here.
Yep. So, so today, we, as I mentioned, we had a call with the cost estimator. What he has promised as a deadline to us is an initial cost estimate next Monday, the 22nd. And what that's going to be is, he is, you know, he's been working on this. You know, he's part of that visioning design series, the architects have been keeping in the breast of what's been going on. So he's got the final report. He's working through that now to put a cost estimate to it. I was surprised because I thought it was the 26th and he said, no, I can get you one on the 22nd. My anticipation of that is we'll probably have some comments because it'll be our first time seeing it, but it will put us essentially in a ballpark. So with that, on the 20, on the 23rd for Select Board, I should have a quote unquote ballpark estimate that we will have, I'm assuming minor comment on some of the stuff that he will have on there. And then his, his goal is on the 26th to have that finalized cost estimate. So, you know, the, 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 the goal would be to attend Select Board meeting, give a similar presentation to what you Give a similar presentation to what you saw tonight, along with uh, in 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 initial cost estimate that we have there. And, you know, for for any committee to see the amount of work that's been done, uh, you know, understand it, work through it, you know. I I truly feel you need one meeting to kind of dive into a lot of this detail, some of these questions that come up. Give it a week to, you know, uh, take in all that information, maybe come up with additional questions, and come back ideally a week later. So um, you know, we we I I've been stating out loud that, you know, I'd like to have this first meeting on the twenty third uh, to give kind of what you saw tonight, maybe even a little more in depth if if needed. Uh, and then have that, you know, estimated cost estimate there uh, for that meeting. And then follow on ideally a week later, uh, which would be the thirtieth uh, for another meeting to see if there would be a formal vote taken at that point. I I just don't think they would, the select one would take a formal vote um, hearing all this information, you know, very first and including the process.
Thanks. So let me just um, see, let me just throw something out there and see if this would make sense. Um, so the you will be discussing the cost estimate at school building committee on Monday next week, the twenty second?
Uh, no, no, our our school building, yeah, our school building, next school building committee meeting is the twenty ninth. Um, so we'll get the cost estimate, it'll be a draft one. I'll disseminate it to school building committee members via email. And then we'll be discussing it the following week.
And so it will be unveiled, so to speak, when you're able to present it at select board on the Tuesday. Okay. So in that sense, it would be most helpful for the school committee to reconvene. I'm hoping this would be something we could do uh, you know, pretty quickly, given that we're having this discussion now. We've taken in a lot of the information from the rest of the update uh, this evening. Um, what would be the ideal timing for us to um, have a next opportunity for the school committee to kind of receive that final number? That's our final puzzle piece. That will then allow us to kind of go on the record in individually as school committee members around, you know, what what we are hoping to see from our select board around the timeframe and and putting this on the November ballot. So um, I'm and I'm sorry for uh, people watching your, what you see, this this, these are our meetings, these are open meetings, and this is like when we can actually do hash out logistics at times like these. So Sean, if we met like the um, as a school committee and I can follow up offline just around our scheduling, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding, given the um moving parts, we would be looking to meet sometime following July twenty third, but before, when?
Uh, so the ideal time, or not the ideal time, but after school building committee on the twenty ninth and before the select board on the thirtieth. So essentially, you know, if we if we had a afternoon meeting at this time um, that would allow us to, you know, for you guys to be on record for the thirtieth. And and I preface all that, that that's assuming the select board would allow us to have another meeting on the thirtieth.
Okay, well, I I mean, I'm happy to go on record myself right now as a single member to just ask that they would do that, uh, because, you know, I think we've as Dr. Morado was saying, like, we've come this far, we've put this much effort into it, we've, you know, it's really important to see this through. I think with the due diligence that it deserves. Um, so I I will follow up offline um, I about whether we have a quorum available to meet. It sounds like the morning of July thirtieth might be our best bet. Um, so colleagues, like, I'll follow up to confirm if that's going to be possible or not. Um, and uh, Mark, were you gonna?
Sorry, we got, we also could do, I think it's Sean was suggesting, um, the select board doesn't meet until seven o'clock, so we could do this same five thirty time slot if somehow this works for folks on Tuesdays.
Oh, gotcha.
And and the other way to uh, 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 check out is, you know, for for school building committee, you know, we could move our meeting earlier to on Monday. So if you if you wanted to do Monday night, um, I I can work with you on scheduling that. And we can move school building committee kind of earlier in the day Monday. It doesn't have to be at seventeen.
That all sounds good. I mean, um, you know, as as you all know, Mike, I'm speaking to my fellow school committee members, you know, because I've been keeping you apprised, like, individually of um, conversations which have also, of course, now been like alluded to in um, select board meeting of um, late June, um, June twenty fifth, I believe. Um, you know, a- as as you all know, I I've participated in several meetings with various combinations of people, um, with Peter, Glenn, uh, a meeting with Sean together with Chair Wells and Nick Milano and their, you know, various colleagues in the um, town hall side. Um, so we have been sort of having conversations, um, and you you know, it's been mentioned tonight, but of course, a a somewhat, uh, well, an an important factor of those discussions has been the relationship between the need to push forward the school project. Um, which is so obviously desperately indisputably needed overdue, uh, to solve our overcrowding that we're pushing that forward at the same time as we're preparing the for an uh, uh, operational override, which, you know, we also all know um, is overdue and has been postponed to the point that we can no longer postpone it without drastic cuts to services. That would include laying laying off teachers um, next year. So this is where as a school committee, uh, we are, you know, positioned in in between um, these really important pieces. I just want to say, um, for the record that, you know, I have been consistent in my conversations that I I see the um, the urgency and the need, um, and the reasons to do this in November. Um, the reasons have been rehashed here tonight. Um, and you know, I I do appreciate the residents who take time to share their perspectives. Um I think the question of whether it would be in November on its own or in November alongside the operational override as two questions on one ballot, like, to me, that remains a um, sort of an open question that we can be considering. I think there are different views on, you know, the pros and cons of those approaches, depending on where you're coming from. Um, so I'm I'm happy to kind of stay in that conversation, obviously, but um I I do just want to make sure, make that clear because um, you know, that has been hmm, what I have represented in my conversations. Um, and I also just wanted to share one more thing about um, a phrase that you know, Chair Wells used in the conversation, which was this idea of needing to be in lockstep. Um, and I I don't disagree with that, um, as a as something we should be aspiring to as leaders of this town. Um, but I think it is important for me to say what I, what I interpret as lockstep meeting. That means we're in a sort of transparent, good faith, um, sort of partnership where we are doing our best to work together respectfully as um, people who are striving to meet the best interests of our town. And obviously, on school committee where where I sit, where we are, where we sit, that, you know, we are focused primarily on the needs of our students and families of Milton Public Schools, who are among the residents of our town, obviously. Um, and so you know, I I'm looking forward to staying in this conversation. It's not easy, and that's for sure. And the school building project, we need to get done. Uh, we need to let the town have the opportunity to vote on that. Um, I I think that is just a fact. Um, and at the same time, we are in the conversation about the operational override as well. And that is something that we will work closely with the select board to move forward. Um and we need to do both. Uh, that is just the bottom line. Um, we need to have the opportunity to help the town, the residents of the town, understand why both of these pieces are so critically important and needed. Um, and so that's what I'm continuing to work towards. Um, and, you know, it's not nobody is like trying to pretend it's easy. Uh, the conditions may not be ideal. You know, would we have liked more time before this deadline? Maybe, yes, but this is the deadline and, you know, the work has been happening. Um, and we just have to um lean into what our responsibility is, which is to lead, as I heard Chair Wells say, um, in the last meeting. Um so that's, that's just a little update from me, uh, just to make sure that I'm clear with you all. Uh, you know what I am continuing to try to do as I um participate in these conversations. We actually haven't met in um, since before that last select board meeting. Um and I I'm not quite sure when our next meeting um, might be, sort of with the town administrator, superintendent, and um, chairs of the boards, but um Amanda and Mark, I see your hands. Um, if you have questions for me, of course, I'm happy to try to clarify anything. Um, or just understand kind of where you all are. I uh, I do intend to one way or another, um, join the select board meeting on the twenty third, um, just to sort of uh, weigh in, not not in a way to formally represent um, our position as a as a body. Um, but just to provide sort of updates from this conversation and where where we're at, um including the request that we see this through and really take the time to um, consider everything, including the cost. So um, I'll stop there, Amanda.
Um, thanks. So I guess just from a clarity standpoint, and I know when we get back together, and I know there it's it's um, we talk about voting, sort of a, it's a vote of not a, I guess not a binding vote, but it's a vote of um intent or ju- or not intent. Uh, I I guess my question is there, it sounds like a couple of things are being discussed. So it's talking about, you know, Sean was talking about coming back with a budget. So it sounds like there's, one is it support of the school building project and the budget? And then is there a secondary conversation about the desire or the um the need or the desire to get this on the get um, get this on the um get it on uh, the ballot in November. Do you know what I mean? So it sounds like, because once we started
I don't see those as separate things necessarily.
But I I okay, I guess I I do a little bit. I I I don't know, I it it's and maybe I'm just thinking about it differently because it feels sort of like a a theor- i- in a way, it's not a theoretical discussion, but there's we need, you know, there's, it seems to be people believe we need a new school. They've gone down this path, we're getting the costs. And it, the November piece sort of feels like regardless, I I'm not saying the cost doesn't matter, that's not what this this means, but it's regardless of the cost, do we want it to be, is it more bene- is it better needed to have it on the budget and have it on the ballot in November versus the spring? Do you know what I mean? So that's why it feels like it feels like a different discussion. Is it, am I making sense? Do you know what I mean? Because it's not necessarily about I mean, it is about the project and the bu- budget, but it's also seems like a bigger discussion around when this would be, should we, this be put before the voters? And if so, when? In order for there to be si- for it to be success. So I know it, I know that they're all intertwined, but it does feel like two different discussions. Does, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm just looking at it differently, but but they y- you could theoretically, you could still say if you believe in this project, you saw some of the costs earlier that were on the screen for Sean, some of the other ones, so you kind of have in your head. It's not going to be ten X any of those. You have that in your head. Knowing that that, knowing that those costs are coming down the line, could you not still discuss the importance of having it on the November versus spring? I guess that's, I guess that's where my head is. Like, is there, is there any benefit having that conversation, or is it just more beneficial to have it all at once? So um, that's just
And I think we're sort of having that conversation now, right? I mean
Yeah, I just didn't know if we were having
Yeah, but I'll I'll let, um, no, I appreciate what you're raising. You're just, you're teasing out the nuances of this the implications, um, and that's, that's good. Um, and Mark or Sean, like, if you have things you are going to respond to please go go ahead and we can Sean.
I I think, I I think Mark deferred to me. So um, uh, good points, Amanda. So uh, yeah, the nuances to it, you know, for the cost that's there. For the ballot question that we're talking about, that we're asking the select board to put out there right now. It's, it 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 it's a ballot question for, to authorize the town to issue debt, right? And essentially, what 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 we've done at school building committee is we voted on a a recommendation to the select board that they put this on the November ballot. And what will happen is um, the, a- and Glenn might correct me if I go wrong here too, is you know, essentially, the the ballot question that goes there doesn't have a dollar value associated with it, uh, in the language of the ballot, right? And essentially, what it does is it authorizes down to issue debt. The debt number that we'd be issuing is a separate warrant article that would go in front of town meeting to get approved. So essentially, we we'd be using the time between August and whatever that town meeting is to advertise what that nu- number is, what the tax impacts would be, and allow people to understand what that overall impact is. So essentially, when they go to the, for the ballot question, even though there's no number on there, they'll have the number from what was passed at town meeting prior to that. And and this panel check, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
So can I just clarify? So the order would be about what, so the the town, the, it would be a special town meeting at, prior to the election? So it would be determination that is a ballot question, special town meeting to vote on the number ballot, uh, uh, vote in November, correct? Did I have that wrong?
Sure. Uh, well, it's correct. It doesn't need to be, and this is, I know Glenn was fun to jump in. So the typical way these have been passed is town meeting goes first, develops the number, and then it goes to a ballot question following. But there's no, you can switch them around, but I think it would be more harder knowing that the ballot question doesn't have a number associated with it, even though it would be public by that time. Uh, I I think people, people would feel much more comfortable doing a a special town meeting first as knowing that town meeting asks whatever that number is, and then when it goes to the townwide ballot. Um, the key thing for us, the ask to the select board, isn't to approve the budget, isn't to approve the dollar value. It's a, it's allowing people to vote on this, whatever the dollar number comes in at. And if it's too expensive, people will vote it down. But all we're asking is that people get a chance to vote on it in November. November election is eighty-five percent turnout, where a typical town election is about twenty-five. So we we're talking about, i- i- when you look at the numbers, it's about thirteen thousand extra voters that are there. And um, you know, for me, I see it as an opportunity to, you know, get these passed, you know, having that higher turnout. If if we're targeting a time with less turnout, that doesn't make sense to me specifically for something this critical.
Thanks. Mark?
Um, yeah, I just want to say, Amanda, I think you're, you were, you were making sense. Like, there's a, an event diagram here. There's a lot of overlap between those two things, but they are somewhat s- a slightly separate things. And I think I, I, in my mind, the first ask is, I appreciate if um, that there's consensus on us with the board, have um, uh, Lizzie join the select board meeting to, essentially, the first ask is like can we, you know, ask them to make sure they are making time to hold another special meeting in order to make sure they have time to vote? In order to make sure they have time to vote on this before. The first deadline, which is that, you know, August seventh deadline, and that, that, that deadline is when we have to get this stuff to the state. In order to make sure we can have the fall election. So like, that is, that's the first deadline we need to hit in order to hit that. Have everything else happen. And so as Sean said, we don't need them to approve the project or approve the number. We just need them to say like, yes, we're going to hold space in the fall meeting for that. I think a lot of people. Obviously, we are getting closer to it, where we still have three months, a little bit more, um, three and a half months. But, you know, it would seem like we will have a number. Here on Monday, which will be fantastic. And so they'll have some sense of the number, if it's not the exact down-to-the-penny number. That, um, we'll vote on in the fall, or it will be pretty darn close, I'd assume. Um. But yeah, I think the first, the first question is, we just, we want to make sure this light board is on board with. Making the extra time, making these priorities similar to what they've done with having special meetings for MBTA or for, you know, lawsuits or for. You know, any, any of the other things that have kind of come up over, over the course of time, you know, as happens with being in the whiteboard.
And Amanda, just to circle back, I mean, I, I, yes, I, this has been a helpful conversation and I. Don't, didn't mean to like dismiss your, what you were teasing out as the differences. And they are, they are there as differences. I think I was stuck in my own. Um, just thinking around what makes the most sense to. Have us do, um, as a collective in terms of asking us to make a formal vote. Um, you know, which we're not obviously doing tonight. But, um, we have a lot more information right now than we did at the beginning of this meeting. Um, and I'm really, I'm glad that, and I think we should definitely be able to. Do an, another meeting in order to have that final piece of the information. Just even if we don't technically need to know the cost in order to, you know, make a recommendation. Um, I, I'm, I'm recognizing that that is, um, it is an important piece, um, for us to. You know. Be able to know, um, even if it wouldn't necessarily make a difference to some of us, right? Maybe we would vote to. Recommend that the project move to a vote in November, but whether we know how much it's going to cost or not. I mean, and that's, that's fine, but. Um, I'm glad that we will have that opportunity, um, to be able to do that. So I'll, I'll look to coordinate that. And. That will be our next chance, um, to pick this up. But Anna, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say, I really appreciate the School Building Committee, you know, working really hard to get those costs. I know. It doesn't necessarily need to, um, we need to have that cost to decide whether to put it on the ballot, and it's. It's slightly separate, as Amanda mentioned. But I, I do think, I think it's important for us as elected officials to kind of just do our due diligence and kind of understand what's going out there. You know, I know it doesn't affect it, but I think that's why we were elected to represent the community. And I think, you know, us knowing that. Making good decisions in terms of also how it's presented out to the community is also really important, you know, like. Hey, what is our message out to the community on how this, the, the school project is presented, you know, like what is. What is the taxing patients? I know there are a lot of families here that it might be hard on, but I, hopefully, you know, the majority support it and it does pass, you know, so. I really hope that, um, it's very positive and I really, really appreciate, you know, um. Sean and the work that your team has put into this. I know it's a lot of hard work and it's not easy and you guys have stuck with it for so many years. And your dedication to this project is just really appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Amanda?
Uh, yeah, I, so I just want to, just because I want to make sure that I was clear and it doesn't come across as I'm saying that the cost of this project doesn't matter. That was not my intent at all. I just wanted to understand that there are sort of two tracks of conversation. One has to do with the vote. And the other has to do with the project as a whole. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood, are we. How we were looking at it and sort of where the discussion was. So I fully appreciate that we'll have the numbers and it's important to have the number, but also recognizing. That the idea of the vote or the ballot question was separate. So I just wanted to make sure that I, that I understood the nuances of that. So. I appreciate you guys working through that with me.
Thank you for bringing it up. It's, it's an important point. Any other? Um, comments on this topic? Yes, Selena?
Yes, I, I just would like to, you know, go on the record to say that, um. You know, there is an urgency of now, um, that we're looking at. In terms of timing, um, the fall is very important. Um, and I think also that, uh, recognizing that. There is a need for an operational override, and then there's a need for the debt exclusion. Um, for the school project, like that is, those that we're holding on to both of those. And I just hope and I encourage as, as, as elected officials, and I, and I'm talking for the town, not just, you know, the school committee. But all of us to continue to hold on to that urgency and realize that we have to act on both. And we can't hold one hostage over the other because, you know, we're, I don't know, deliberating, you know. The timing is, it really, we have to do this, and we're gonna have to do it in the fall, and we're gonna have to do it in the spring, or we'll do it all in the fall, and. You know, but we have to, and the reality is that the need is, is there. Um, on, and so much is riding, uh, and as a school committee member. I mean, I hold sort of, you know, what, what we were elected to make sure that we're representing, and that is the well-being of our kids, right? We want to make sure our kids get the best education. If we're looking at cuts coming because we don't do the operational override. The kids are going to suffer. If we hold on to this project and delay it longer, the kids are going to suffer. So I really want to bring it back to that and for us to hold on to that and really think that, you know, the cost of course matters. And it's important for us and we're gonna do, we're doing all the due diligence and everything we need to do to make sure we're transparent. We get the cost, you know, as, as exact as we can, obviously, um, to begin to continue this conversation. But really, I would implore that all of us sort of show up for the town and do what we need to do on both, uh, on both accounts. Because the, it's urgent, we need to act.
Thanks, Selena. Um, I think that's a good note to end that conversation on. And, um. You all can look for a follow-up from me about scheduling. Um, the, the next piece of this. Thanks again, Sean. And, uh, Shawna Rourke and Sean Burke, thank you very much for being here tonight or. Um, giving us this information, as everyone has said, really appreciate your dedication. It's very exciting. Uh, that shouldn't get lost in the shuffle of the mix, like. School looks beautiful, looks awesome. Um, I think we could all be really proud to be a town that can build that. A school like that for our kids. Um, so to be continued and thanks again. Um, and we're gonna transition quickly. I know this meeting has gone maybe a little longer than we thought. Um, Peter had to jump off because he had to participate in a meeting at the superintendent's, um, conference. So, um, we can still, I think, have the brief finance report, um. If that's okay, because it shouldn't take long. I know we need to approve some vendor warrants, Mark. Um, and then the, the budget process should just be kind of a brief. Update, hopefully. So, Mark, I'll, I'll hand it to you now. Thanks.
Great. Um, I think I failed and I apologize because I've been kind of out. Um, but I have two vendor warrants, the fifty-second and fifty-third. I don't think I've sent to y'all. So I think both those I, I owe you. Uh, to board it over. I did look at them and, and sign a return. I think I've sent the other three overs, but if. It's not the case, and I'll double-check my sent email when I hang up here just to see which vendor warrants I have sent you or not. But we have. Five vendor warrants that we need to vote on as a, as a committee, um. And, um, unless anybody has any questions, I can go ahead and start making the motions. Here, and I'll make the motion, uh, to approve vendor warrant number forty-five, forty-nine, in the amount of. Three hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, to approve vendor warrant fifty in the amount of four hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventeen cents. Vendor warrant fifty-one in the amount of eight hundred six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Vendor warrant fifty-two in the amount of one million three hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and twelve cents. And vendor warrant number fifty-three in the amount of fifty thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
I second that motion.
So we'll need a roll call vote for this.
Great. Uh, I will conduct the roll call vote, uh, in order of my screen, uh, Chair Carroll.
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Number two?
Yes.
Member Saria?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Thanks. So, um. At this time, in terms of FY twenty-six. Um, budget process, quick update. We have Dr. Pavlicek here. Um, we have Ms. Blake. And this is in the context of, again, we've mentioned it already tonight, but just knowing that it's sort of out there. A conversation about, um. The pending need for the operational override as we look ahead. Don't expect a drawn-out discussion here. We'll have plenty of time for that later, but Dr. Pavlicek, am I handing it over to you, Mark, or?
Uh, I mean, I have opinions on this, but I'm, I'm not prepared to talk. I think Glenn, you had a presentation from Peter.
Oh, I, I just wanted to say that we are in, still in the process of closing out fiscal twenty-four. As you know, we had, um, mentioned in quarterly reports, the Springtown meeting, this was a very challenging year, especially. Um, for a couple of factors, you know, so we've said it many times that since the, uh, fiscal twenty-four budget was put together back. Uh, actually, in the fall of twenty-two, because it was voted in the spring of twenty-three and put together in the fall of twenty-two. There was, for instance, that sixteen percent increase in out-of-district special education tuitions that was, uh. Approved by the state. We talked a bit about this in the spring. That's why our budget for fiscal twenty-six, um, for fiscal twenty-five. That we did it, that, that we presented for town meeting was significantly higher than fiscal twenty-four budget because there we had so many unfunded. Pieces to fiscal twenty-four. So fiscal twenty-four was a difficult year, um, because we had to absorb all those costs. Luckily, we had, um. Built up some reserves in our circuit breaker account and our Medicaid funding and some other sources that were able to close the gap. It is, uh, closed. We are going to close out on, on budget, um, or, you know, to, to a zero total. There is one piece that remains. There is, um, a certain amount of unspent. Um, ARPA funds that we're going to spend off to finish the year, but that's going to require a change in the, um. Allocation of them and a vote of by the select board, um, on next, uh, next Tuesday night. That's just. Because everything seems to be happening on the twenty-third. So, um. Uh, actually, Peter and I will also be at the select board meeting on the twenty-third to talk about this because they need to do one final vote to. Reallocate some unused ARPA funds that were going to go away. Um, uh, owing to the sunsetting of those funds, and that will be the final piece, um, that closes out our books. For this year. So, um, we will, we will end the year, you know, not, not with a surplus, not with a deficit, but on zero. But it will have cost us, um, much of our reserves that we built up over the years, particularly in special education. Which sort of emphasizes the need going forward to build a stronger budget and the operating override that we're talking about for next spring. You know, we talk about, uh, having crept through the last few years, um, we have. Um, but it's, uh, the ability to creep is, uh, rapidly diminished. So I think, uh, it just, uh. Further emphasizes the need for an operational override next spring. So that's what, um, that's the. The three-minute version of the closeout of fiscal twenty-four, and I can write it up as a, a final quarterly report. As we're going on, but we're just in the process of, uh, closing out now.
And I can share some information on the FY, uh, twenty-six process a little bit, but Anna, question?
I just had a question on that, um, on the operational override that you mentioned, Glenn. Is that something that we could get? Numbers before, if there's like talk of maybe combining both overrides into one for November, or is that something that would have to wait till? The spring to do, the operational?
I can jump in on that a little bit. Is that, um, you know, we have luckily Katie, uh, has joined us and is taking over kind of the finances. Um, we're, uh, extremely. Uh, happy to have her. Um, she and I, um, still need to meet and kind of have a launch conversation. Glenn and I talked a little bit about. That exact question, Anna, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, just before we actually even thought of the fall, uh, override. Um, it's about a month ago, we were just talking about the budget process for FY twenty-six and. How do we make sure we get to a, a strong budget number and plenty of time for the committee to review? Uh, Katie and I need to sit down and have a similar conversation, and then we share that with, um, Selena and Amanda as part of kind of finance committee. So we can all kind of be on the same page. Um, certainly, the idea of a fall override vote. Is, um, going to be tricky, um, because it, you know, unlike the school building project where we've been working on this since. You know, uh, December and before, this is going to be very tight to try and get all the, the, the process. It normally would take us into January to have that wrapped up by. I'm not a hundred percent sure when, uh, if it would need to be the same town meeting, or if we'd have a special town meeting after the. Full vote. So I, yeah, the, the timeline and those things, I think are things that are still somewhat up in the air and, and under the control of the select board. Um, but we definitely, if the select board decides we, we have to do this and get that together in the fall, that's, that's what we're going to have to do. And so that's going to mean a lot of, a lot more meetings for the finance committee. So, uh, Selena and Amanda can get excited and, uh, certainly a lot more reporting back to y'all to. To get your feedback on, and, and that's going to be a, a lot of work for the school staff. As, you know, Katie is working with Peter and working with school leaders to kind of get input and, and make sure we are planning appropriately, um. Because it's not even just, you know, last year it took us to January, and that was a one-year budget planning process. And so we need to. Do the one, we need to do five years. So it's a, a lot of work and a lot less time. Um, so I have concerns about it, but. You know, we will m- make miracles if, if we need to, because we got good people.
Well, and the reason I asked only was because, you know, this, this amount just came up, um, you know, once, once we figured out what those special ed. Um, additional costs were. So, and then just concerned when Glenn said zero, it's, it's always a bit scary. Um, so I, I, you know, and I, I look forward to, I hope we can continue to make the, um. Finance meetings cross-posted so that, you know, those of us that can, want to attend can, because I think it was really helpful last year to be involved in the process. Um, so thank you so much for all the work you guys are doing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make sure to do that. We've not had any finance committee meetings, uh, again, just thus, thus far. So, um, Katie and I will put our. Heads together and then, um, hopefully I'll reach out to Amanda and Selena and we can, we can schedule those and certainly cross-post them and let, let the whole committee know when those happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So this will be another topic we obviously continue to discuss. Um, but, but good to kind of open the conversation. So. Um. The only other thing on our agenda for this evening is just a quick approval of minutes for June fifth. Did anybody have any edits to the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the, um, school committee meeting minutes for June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you. Um. So, member two?
Yes.
Member Sario?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member, member Vargis?
Yes.
Member Lauren?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So. Uh, for our next meeting. uh, for our next meeting, we will um, follow up on that. That will be the follow-up on the School Building Committee recommendation in order that we get to weigh in on that. And um, following that, of course, we are anticipating our summer retreat, uh, which will be our opportunity to begin discussing and setting our goals for next year. Um, so those will be our next two meetings, and if there's nothing else, uh, we'll just anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Number two?
Yes.
Member Loring?
Yes.
Member Sario?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much to everybody for being here, especially Dr. Watts, Ms. Blake, Dr. Pavelcheck. And great to see you all. I'll see you again soon. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.